Yep.
All right, guys, let's get it rolling here. Welcome to the work session in July. All right, so for ordinance 50 and 51, we still, I'm sorry, this is June work session. Ordinance, what? 50 and 51, we are still...
And 62.
And 52.
51, we are waiting till July. 62, we'd like to do the second reading on that. Jeff?
Okay.
So we'll just ignore that 50 and 51 are there. 62, all right.
Oh, don't even talk about the first one.
Yeah, we've done in the last couple meetings. All right, resolution 63, this is going over, this is voting on the fact finder report for the collective bargaining for the police department. Most of that, or almost all of that, we are not able to discuss in public because it's relation to public, to collective bargaining. So at the beginning of the meeting, between, after correspondence, I'm going to call a motion to have an executive session so we can discuss all this further. And the lawyer that helped out, what's, what's?
Pat Hoven.
Hoven, that's going to be joining us, and Mark and the mayor will be joining us. So we'll be able to discuss that, oh, and Annette, okay. So we'll be able to discuss that in that session. Next is...
Do we have a thought on how many reads?
We have, no, yeah, it is three.
So there's, yeah, there's seven days that council has approved or disapproved.
Okay. So we're going to do that in three?
Once we get it figured out in that executive session, let's do 1, 2, 3 on that. Be the vote. Now, we don't know if they'll pass it, obviously, but we'll vote on it, 1, 2, 3. All right, 64 is alternate tax budget.
Yeah, it's housekeeping, we do this every year. The only thing, you know, we have the 2.53 for the general fund expenditures, that's statutory, we have the pension for the police, .3 mils, and then the voted issue for the general fund operating. It states 5.07, but the effective rate is way less, and that would change only if our evaluation changes. So it's just statutory, file this, and then later on in the year, the county will send us what the rates are, and we have to vote on those.
And the 5.07, it ends next year, so that's going to balance.
Uh, let's see. Collection began...
Is it in this year or next year?
I don't think it's next year.
It says begins, ends 2021, began, ends 2025.
Ends at the end of 2025, though?
At the end of 2025, so we will collect at 25.
Ballot.
On the ballot at 25 for 26.
Right.
Yeah.
If you don't put it on the ballot in 25, you're done.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
John's going to make sure. All right, any question on this? Housekeeping, we'll just go 1, 2, 3, I suspect we need to get that taken care of.
Yeah, that's due to, well, we can't wait, 1, that's due to county, July 20.
They're already up, you know, exceptional changes or anything?
No.
Now, it's just...
So we're doing two instead of three?
We'll do three.
Oh, okay.
Okay, next is resolution 65 for OPWC for Ledge and the Highlands Valley View project. Mr. Gelati, you want to talk about that?
Yes, I can. So in short, we're going to try to get some more free money. Two separate projects, as Ms. Grant mentioned, one is reservicing of Ledge Road between North Bedford and Shepherd Road. Main road's in terrible shape, needs to be paved. It's a good candidate for such grant application. And the other project is, of course, our intersection Highland Valley View intersection project that, as you know, is scheduled for construction in 2025. So we're going to ask OPWC for some additional funds to go towards that project to reduce the local cost here to us as a city. You probably saw the maps that were attached to the email, so I put those in there just to give everybody an idea of what the turn lanes will look like when the intersection is finished, because I know from time to time that question comes up. So those are the two separate projects that we're going to apply for. The applications are actually due on August 30th, so we're ahead of the game. And one other note for council, next month's meeting, we plan to have a similar piece of legislation for yet a third project, that would be the intersection of Ravenna and Shepherd Road, which also is additional turn lanes, it's planned for 2025 construction. As you know, we share that project with all of our neighboring communities there. Twinsburg is actually the lead, so they'll be making the application to OPWC, but we simply need to do a cooperative piece of legislation that we support their, their application. So look for that next month.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
The project here, we have turn lanes there, but we've never had a turn signal. Will that happen when this is done, or will, especially now that we've got semis, buses, and four billion cars?
Yeah, so I guess quickly, you'll see in the little map there, there will be a dedicated left turn lane in all four directions, so that dedicated left turn lane will have...
There's none north and south.
Yeah, there are left turn lanes now on Highland.
On east and west, but none on the north and south.
Yeah, because you just got to drive like a maniac to get left. So you'll be putting, when this is done, the lights will go up, the turn signal light?
New traffic, yeah, there'll be a new traffic signal, and it'll have a green arrow for all four directions.
Okay, and then on Ledge, we've got, we've got a problem right now, or not, at Bedford, you know, that's conservation, right, conservancy, the corner.
Oh, yes.
And there's that gravel there, everybody's using that as a right turn lane. So we got to figure out, maybe when we pave it, we plant something there, because they're using that to get around the traffic.
Big rocks really work well.
Rock something.
I actually noticed that as well.
Oh, I was going to say, I've never noticed that.
Yeah, we should probably...
Oh, yeah.
I've never seen it either, and I trouble that every day.
That's the way I go to the post office, so it's like, okay. And they've got semis now coming off of, you know, the freeway. So it's just, and I know, at some point, can we re-approach the railroad route above the bridge? Mayor Cook, the tried his darndest. That is an accident.
I think with some of the state legislation that they're trying to do regarding railroads, they're trying to make them a little more responsive to stuff like that, since the East Palestine is actually...
That bridge is...
I think they're trying to...
Most people want to go straight through in the middle, but you're like, no, it's actually two lanes, you go slow. Yeah, they don't want to, and the semis coming through, you don't have a choice. Right.
On which street?
On Ledge Bridge.
On Ledge.
On Ledge Bridge, at freeway.
I don't think a semi can get through, there are actually more alerts that you can't get through because they're pulling a semi back out.
I don't know that we could put another sign out at this point.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job.
They can't get through, but they try.
Right, yeah, they can't get through, so there's nobody passing through that area, they're just making a futile attempt.
Mayor Cook, the freeway for Calveron, on that bridge, and it's just, when we did the one on 82, thinking maybe we'd get that one, no. They don't care. It's kind of like the one in...
See more nixels on that, about that bridge being closed.
I got a question about the turn lanes on the...
Where it says it's one lane, but it's not really.
Bet, North Bedford, right? No, the south, no, Shepard. The link, the turn lane making a right to go northbound on Shepherd Road in the picture, that's going to encroach on some existing property, or is that existing city right of way?
A little bit of both.
Do you, at what point do we go out and tell the resident that we're going to take that?
That happens later this year.
Okay. And that's going to happen probably at the northeast corner of Highland and Valley View too, right?
There's several locations around this intersection, there will be several properties.
But we let them know that that's coming?
We let them know, there's an, ODOT has an entire step-by-step process laid out that we are required to follow, and we'll go through that whole process later this year.
It'll be the similar process to what we did on the state route 82?
Uh, yeah.
That was expanded.
Yeah, Highland Road, if you notice where the orange, they're taking part of their front in the driveway.
Yep, I saw that.
We're already, this, this project on Highland already is partially paved by the state, right, or no? We're, we're not already getting help with this?
The intersection? Yeah, we are already getting help, we've already received grant funding from CMAT program, we've also received grant funding from AMATS, which is Akron's transportation district. So we're now applying to OPWC for additional money to even further reuse our local share.
Excellent, thank you. You guys have any further questions on this, or do you want to go 1, 2, 3? This is the application for a grant, so might as well get this done and in the bag. All right. Nate Falconstein, to reappoint on the civil service commission, any questions about that? Nate's been on it, this is his second term. Everything's going well. All right, let's do 1, 2, 3 so we can get him rolling.
How long are the terms?
Five.
Six, yes?
Six, okay.
Five.
Five?
Five.
Uh, next is the signal box that needs to be replaced. Mark, do you want to talk about that?
So there is a traffic accident, was it in February?
Yeah, early February.
Of this year, it was a gentleman had simply lost control and took out the signalization box. It's over $60,000 to fix. He had the state minimum coverage of $25,000, which left a significant gap next to the mayor's perseverance, we were able to get that individual to pay the residual. The reason this is before council is because the amount is over the competitive bidding threshold, so just from an audit and perspective, to be safe, we're running it through council, even though signal service is really the only game in town that can fix it. They very nicely loaned the city some equipment from back in February till now, but they need that equipment back, so we have to have replacement in place for public safety purposes.
Any further questions on that?
Just real quick, do we own that and the state doesn't, at the end of the state route?
Right.
Do we own every intersection on a state route when it comes to the traffic laws?
Yeah.
Or is the state ever owned by?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Well, you choose a state route, right, as well as letting, so I just believe we probably don't do that.
I don't know if there's any assumptions to that or not.
The state put in the ones on 82 coming off the ramp when they did the paving over there, but as soon as the project was done, we took over, we didn't pay if damage had done, we take...
Good to know.
We know the state hope to have this done.
Well, as he said, we have temporary equipment in there, this is the good, our equipment that the money's going to support, so I assume pretty quick.
There's incentive for everybody to do it immediately, so...
Oh.
Probably within...
I had to call the guy and let him know, hey man, we borrowed your property for a while, because I mean, they, that's a lot of money and equipment that they're loaning us, you know, that they use for emergencies, and I'm like, you know, we got this issue, because the check came from the insurance company, and it's like, it's not covered yet, and it's got to work through this, and he's like, yeah, you know, we'll loan it to you, but I kind of promised him it wouldn't be for me.
Right.
Yeah, kind of this long, but...
Has the car wash opened up?
No.
Thank God. That intersection's open.
That's going to get any better.
So it's not to besmirch Chief's good name, let's do this 1, 2, 3.
I appreciate it.
All right, the next is for commutation for non-union city employees, so this is the job description.
It's creating the position of communications and records supervisor, person to be in charge of records documents and all the dispatchers and continue the dispatcher job.
And will that be separate from your administrative assistant?
Yes, yes.
This is the one we talked about before. You mentioned, I think, last week.
We've, we've had lots of conversations about that. This will be, I think, the final step in the plan, the reorganization.
Any further questions about that? Is this person going to also be a dispatcher, or no?
For both parts, yeah, depending on manpower.
Okay, so they'll, they'll take dispatcher, okay. Any further questions on that, then? All right, let's do that, 1, 2, 3, so they can keep going on that. All right, next is the amendment to budget.
This is amendment number two. Happy to report, I'm adjusting the income tax up based on collections to date, and, you know, we'll do our six-month review at our next meeting. Joey had a project, 209, 800-ish, that we needed to add to the budget, and that's going to be paid for by the sewer district, community cost share. The $350,000 for the five Ford Explorers, we needed to add that in because we found them. So those are the highlights, and there is a member in attached to the amendment request.
As far as wheels on the ground, are you being made whole?
We're, we're good, we actually, I actually talked to the guy from the dealership today. As much trouble as we had getting cars, it couldn't have been a better time. Apparently Ford now is giving you 20% of your order for the next two years. So if we chose to order cars today that are coming next year, and we ordered 10, they're only getting in the due. So, I mean, finally we've got the cars, we're good, we're good for four years. We'll see what the market's like in four years, maybe we should all move today, you know?
John, I wasn't able to suss this out under my old records, but you adjusted everything based on income tax collections, which the general, I assume they all went, they went up?
They all went up, yes.
Based on actual?
Yes.
Do you have a ballpark about how much more you think we collected than?
About 5%. That's, that's what I increased it, so it went a little higher than that. Because I don't like that.
Right. All right, any questions on any of these folks?
Just a really quick one on the family rec center, you also needed a fire panel too, an additional fire.
Yeah, I'm adding money for a fire panel for the rec center as well.
Yeah, ours is shot, it was old about five years ago.
And another hundred for the trail, to bring that up to 200 here.
What, the, the underground tanks, that's for the service gasoline?
Yeah, that's an annual, annual.
And it wasn't previously in the budget, or?
Correct.
Or did it go up this year?
It got paid out of street last year.
Okay.
So we're paying it out of the underground storage tank fund issue.
Stands to reason. All right, anything else? Let's get this, 1, 2, 3. And then the next one is noxious weeds ordinance, Mr. Mayor wants to speak about that.
Mr. Rodick and I will both speak on it, but essentially what we have, we found that there are, what would you say, about 10 properties?
Yes.
That we have to cite them every time to cut the grass, we have to send out a landscaper to cut the grass, which goes on their tax duplicate, and it's been, it's never ended, it's the same properties every time. What, what we want to do is stiffen that a little bit, because they had a week to cut it. What I'm having happen is all the neighbors are calling, and they have had enough. They know it's the same property, they know it's their neighbor, they know they're not cutting their grass, they know that we're going to send a landscaper over to do it. We want to tighten that up a little bit to 672 hours, and a little bit more of a penalty for those people that are doing that, because they're just not taking care of their lawn. I, I got to hear about it, we're spending time and money, putting resources out there to go look at it. It's, it's a lot of work that is just, quite honestly ridiculous, that, you know, the grass is getting to be three, four feet high, and we have to go out there and continually do this. So the intention will be to tighten that up a little bit. The vast majority of people in this community are not a problem, 99% of people, we don't have an issue. It's just these handful of properties that we're continually having this problem that we need to address. Really, this is spurred by the people that are calling us and complaining about it. So we're trying to get to a point where we don't have to deal with that anymore. We want to make sure that we're doing our jobs and taking care of our properties. You go through the majority of our town, you all know, everyone takes very, very good care of their property. It's, it's a beautiful place to live, we all acknowledge that, except for these, these blighted properties, or for whatever reason, they're not doing it, I don't even know if they, we try to even talk to them, I know Bob and Chris try to speak to them and say, hey, you know, you realize this goes on your tax duplicate, you're not, you know, really need to work with the owners. But unfortunately, these handful of properties are just not getting it, so...
I get calls on them regularly.
I do, I get them probably weekly, sometimes almost daily, to put it in perspective. It's, it's really, it's a problem, so, anything I missed there?
I think you had all the right...
Do you want to talk about the amount of time you and Chris spend driving out to these properties?
Well, that's, you know, because once we get a complaint, you have to, you take a look at it originally, you have to go ahead and prepare the notice and deliver it, then you have a follow-up with that. So every time you have one complaint, you have a follow-up automatically, and we know, I don't want to say the target, but Chris has done a great job since 2019 of tracking the properties that tend to be the most problematic. And it seems like certain properties are always there, and when they leave, somebody else takes their place, they only leave by two reasons, either by some means of attrition do they, do they go, others, people just don't want to cut the grass. So I think, and Mayor, the one thing we didn't touch on was the, the height of the, of the grass, eight inches in the height of the season, it's, it's about 13, 14 inches by, by the tiny you get to cut it. So, you know, it's just better to keep it a little bit lower, which is consistent with neighboring municipalities, which is, is a good routine length to tolerate.
Which costs a lot more money, obviously, when the grass is higher, so we're trying to get that into a little bit more control to help them. And I'll tell you this, there's, there was one elderly gentleman that didn't have the ability to cut his lawn, and I was able to go up to county and find him some support to help with that, so it's not like we're not trying to help these folks that aren't doing it, there's just some properties, for whatever reason, they're not cutting their grass.
But, but that's the only one you found that was unable to do it? The elderly gentleman? Because I wonder how many?
We, we try, look, we try to help people, we're never ones that go out there and start sticking stuff on their door and being, you know, bullies, that's not what our intention is, our intention is to say, hey, you know, we're getting complaints about your property, we really need you to take care of it. If there's an ability to help them in some way, we'll always do that, but unfortunately, this has been going on for years, and Bob can attest to this, it's the same properties every year. I hate to say it, some of them are young, able-bodied people, and they just don't cut their grass, I don't, I don't know why.
The new fee, I think it was $250, that doesn't kick in immediately, right? It's after one or two failures?
After the third failure, correct?
The third failure.
And that's another thing, you know, we're trying to stiffen up the, encourage you to recognize that you have a property, and it's like your own property.
There's some...
And there's one-offs, I'm sorry, there's one-offs, you know, it may happen to someone on vacation, someone's in hospital, we are understanding, we're not going to, that's not what the intention is.
Right.
The ones that are continually becoming an issue?
The chronic problems.
That we're trying to address here.
So you always get a notice first, and the ability to rectify it with no further action?
That's true.
So no one's going to be blindsided by just, here's a bill.
There's always the concern, two of the properties on Shepherd that are next to the power lines, of who owns that and who is to cut it, because if you go by there, it's out of control again. And the properties, on Shepherd Road where the power lines come over, if you turn right off of Berkshire, they don't know if it's theirs, or is it the property owned by, you know, the power lines. So we always get into problems with them, who's going to cut it? So we may have to address those two. Because they're out of control.
Have to look at the math of the homeowner responsibility.
That one brush fire, it's in that area.
The power line.
And you don't think there's going to be any cascading consequences for lowering, lowering the height from eight inches to six inches, or not going to accidentally...
Most people, either cutting around three or four inches, and going, right now, for example, we're hitting that period in time, the grass is going to start growing slower, and they'll remain at a pretty slow growth until probably the mid-September, when it starts to cool off, we get some rains, but, you know, the, atypically, most people leave their lawn around three to four inches. I think six is, is pretty thorough with the Indian, industry standard, and associated with that is the 72 hours, you know, there's going to be periods where we're not going to actually run out there and measure for the six and a half inches. It's going to have to be something that we would consider to be a nuisance, nuisance type length. If we have a rainy, rainy week, obviously, we're not going to be dinging people, you know, that we, I think, both Chris and I just could common sense with, with the way that we go on criminal enforcement.
Are you still going with the three months, though, before you, you know, final? Or three, three incidents before you find them?
Yeah, it's, it's three failures.
Which is not three months.
Well, I know Chris...
The one on Road, who they planly, you know, cut their grass, Chris was out there.
I've seen houses that have had a, a tech, have got attacked at least once in one.
The, you know, the, was it the May, don't cut your grass because you want to help the bees and everything, did that include some accounting?
It was once that it was just...
It was, don't cut your grass because they want to help the...
That, that's the reason you cut the grass, is to prevent insect and rodent infestation.
Yeah, but, but it was a public campaign, I think it was kind of our county who did it, and that, so everybody left their yards open.
It was just Cleveland Knights, not the county.
Still have to follow your, the rules of your city. All right, let's do one read on that, then see if we're getting public feedback on anything. And we were talking about the July meeting, having a finance meeting, so what have you decided on that?
We'll, we'll set that at one hour prior to the work session.
So it'll either be an hour and a half, or an hour and 15 minutes before the, the meeting, if that's all right with everyone? Will this be us and Mr. Veras? Do you need the department heads to come in? Probably not. All right. Anything else for this agenda?
There are no objections to the car control permit, I'm aware of, is there any? Just to clarify, John's got this under the...
Is that so you can drink your beer?
So, Alagash, Alagash White?
The other, the other...
All right, folks, we'll see you out there then. All right, folks, we'll see you out there then.
so we will go right into ordinance number sixty-two.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-two twenty twenty-three for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to section eight point zero four, eight point zero five, and section twelve point zero one of the charter regarding the composition of the police and fire departments.
Thank you. Resolution number sixty-three.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance, uh, resolution sixty-three twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Emergency resolution acknowledging and accepting the terms set forth in the report of a fact finder relative to the sergeant and patrol officer bargaining units of the city of Macedonia Police Department.
So essentially, we went to fact finding with the patrolmen's and sergeants in the police department. The fact finder has provided that report. We're asking council today to affirm that. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Goodetti?
No, sir.
Thank you. I will ask for a roll call on this one, please.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, resolution sixty-three twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Thank you. Or, resolution sixty-three carries. Resolution number sixty-four.
Uh, yes, I'd like to offer resolution number sixty-four for its second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution adopting alternate tax budget information for the city of Macedonia, Ohio for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and submitting the same to the Summit County Auditor.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, annual housekeeping where we send down our proposed budget, initial budget for next year in relation to any property taxes. Uh, pretty much the tax will stay the same. If, if anything, it might be a little bit lower next year if, if the evaluations go up in the, in the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Uh, Mayor, I, uh, moved to adopt resolution number sixty-four twenty twenty-three and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution sixty-four carries. Resolution number sixty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number sixty-five twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission District Day Public Works Committee program year thirty-six, the Ledge Road Resurfacing Project and the Highland Road Valley View Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Director Gelati.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, we'll be applying to OPWC for grant funding for two separate projects. Uh, Ledge Road Resurfacing, that's the portion between North Bedford Road and Shepherd Road. And the second project is our, uh, intersection improvements at Highland and Valley View. Uh, applications are due August thirtieth.
And that project takes place in two thousand twenty-five.
Correct.
Been waiting a long time for that. A little longer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we pass and adopt a, according to law, resolution number sixty-five twenty twenty-three, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution sixty-five carries. Resolution sixty-six.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution sixty-six twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution confirming the reappointment of Nate Falkenstein to Macedonia Civil Service Commission.
Uh, Nate has been on for his first term, and I spoke to him, and I think he's been a great member of the Civil Service Commission. So I asked him if he would be interested in, in continuing on with that, and he has obliged that. So we are bringing it to council to affirm that, if you so please. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution sixty-six twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution sixty-six carries. Ordinance number sixty-seven.
I move to offer ordinance sixty-seven twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Signal Service Company for the replacement of a traffic control box and equipment for the intersection of Route Eight and Highland Road in the city of Macedonia without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
Director Goodetti.
So this, uh, is some equipment that was damaged from a traffic accident. The city has obtained, uh, the equivalent of the replacement caused from the third party who caused the accident. Um, this is coming before council because it's over the, out of the bidding threshold, although there's really only one company in town, um, that can do the repairs, but this is simply to authorize it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number sixty-seven twenty twenty-three and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number sixty-seven carries. Ordinance number sixty-eight.
Mayor, I present ordinance number sixty-eight twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending section one of ordinance seventy-nine twenty twenty-two, which established the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees in Macedonia effective January first of twenty twenty-three.
Chief Yakapovich.
So this is going to, as part of the restructuring of the police department, this is going to add the position of communications and record supervisor for our dispatcher.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number sixty-eight twenty twenty-three according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number sixty-eight carries. Ordinance number sixty-nine.
Yes, Mayor, I, I move to, uh, I move to offer ordinance number sixty-nine twenty twenty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-seven twenty twenty-two relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our second amendment and, uh, happy to state that I'm increasing our municipal, uh, income tax collections about five percent based upon collections to date. Uh, increasing some estimated money coming in from the sewer district, uh, community cost share for our stormwater project, uh, about two hundred nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And, uh, also, uh, we are going to be purchasing, well, we're in the process of actually receiving these five explorers for the police department. So, the, those are some of the highlights, Mayor.
Thank you. And we have received all of our police vehicles, because I saw the second Durango in today. So we are currently full capacity of vehicles, just not equipped to go out yet. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number sixty-nine twenty twenty-three and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance sixty-nine carries. Ordinance number seventy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy twenty twenty-three for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending section nine zero nine dot zero four of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to noxious weeds.
Essentially, this, uh, ordinance is going to try and work to deal with some of the problem properties we have in town. This is essentially, uh, myself and the building department hearing from you, the people that live in town, and the complaints we're having with, uh, troublesome properties where they're not taking care of their, their lawns. And, uh, this will help to rectify that problem. So there's more to come on this here in the future. So if you're watching this, want to know more, please contact our clerk of council or myself or the building department. We'll let you know what's going on with that. Uh, and if you want to reach out to council, I'm sure they'd be happy to hear from you as well. Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none. I'll go into the mayor's report. Uh, first and foremost, I want to welcome Ms. Christie Young. She's back there today. Uh, her first day taping our meeting with, with our, with Director Collins back there. So, council, if you have the opportunity before you leave tonight, I'd ask that you, uh, introduce yourself and get to know her a little bit. Uh, she kind of got off to a, a rocky start because we were, um, it was on a Thursday and kind of going through all the different things we need to do, but we're starting to get everything in line and, uh, taking a long, hard look at our website, our Facebook, all the ways that we communicate. I can promise you, uh, the things that we've talked about so far with, with Mrs. Young, I'm very excited for what's to come. I also want to thank, um, Councilor Brandt here for being a part of the interviews to, to choose Mrs. Young, because I think she's going to be excellent. And, uh, thank you for your time you, you put into that.
Yeah, I was excited to meet her, and I can't wait to see what she's going to do to help with the city. It's going to be great.
Thank you. Uh, next on my list is Happy Independence Day. Uh, we won't have a council meeting before Independence Day, one of my favorite holidays, July fourth. So please enjoy that safely. I'm sure that the chiefs are going to echo that. Uh, but do that safely and, uh, enjoy yourself. I want to thank all of our police, our fire, our service, and especially our Parks and Rec staff in another amazing summer fest, Spirit of Macedonia event. Um, I think the music was awesome. Uh, the one day, I, I happened to be playing softball that evening, I think it was the Friday evening, and I'll tell you what, the, the band sounded amazing. I think it was a Journey tribute band, and they were awesome. So kudos to that. I heard a lot of good things about the selection of alcoholic beverages at the beer tent. People enjoyed that as well. But more than any of that, the prizes, the rides, all the stuff for the kids, I think everyone really enjoyed themselves, and the fireworks were amazing as always. So thank you for all of the departments that had a hand in that and helped with it. Um, really, really cool. Can't wait to see where we go in the future and the expansion of things that we're doing within that department. Last but not least, don't drive distracted, put the phone down. All right, next up is committee reports.
Yesterday, we had our June Parks and Rec Commission meeting. Um, we spent a lot, a lot of time meeting with the neighbors of the rec center in Longwood Park who live in the neighborhood, uh, that butts, uh, the park, um, where the new fields are, are being dragged. Actually, they're old fields, they're being recreated and put back to, uh, be able to get some use out of them. They had some concerns, they weren't really sure what was going on over there, so we let them know of, uh, our plans for that. And also listen to some concerns about lights. This is the concerns that they have about lights, there are concerns that Mr. Chaddick shares with them, so everyone will be much happier once we get the lights swinging in the right direction. Um, other than that, we just had a good, uh, recap of what's been going on in the summer, all, uh, all the, uh, programs that are going on that we already were aware of, already getting ready for Fall Fest. Um, and we had a great breakdown of Summer Fest and how well that went, and, and I want to thank your department too for, for doing such a great job. And, and I noticed that, you know, every, every year there's just something a little bit better about it, so thank you. Um, and that was about it. We had our, you know, most of the meeting was spent talking with the, the neighbors and the residents and getting some stuff cleared up. So we will not be having a meeting in July. Our next meeting will be the third Wednesday in August at 6:00 PM upstairs in, uh, the office. End of my report.
Thank you. A great shirt. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports.
Oh, we do want to, uh, the finance committee, want to announce that?
Yes, I'm sorry, there will be a finance committee meeting, uh, at the next council meeting. It'll start in an hour before the work session. Everybody's welcome to attend.
It'll just be an overview of what, uh, how we are in the middle of 2023.
Thank you. All right, moving into department reports, we'll start with our service supervisor, Mr. Ray Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last week, we finished wall repairs on Oak Tree Drive. Uh, this week, we started ditching a cobra replacement. And finally, uh, mulch is available for all residents at Garage One at 9000 Valley Road, uh, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM.
Are we starting that tomorrow or Monday?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Do we advertise that, do you know? If we haven't, we probably should. If you can get, actually, Mrs. Young is here, if you could let her know that.
I believe, uh, Dan had sent her an email.
Oh, okay, good.
Could you repeat the hours?
Yeah, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM.
Okay. Is there, is that how we've normally done it? Or have people been able to get it? Oh, that's, I understand. You changed it now, right?
So what, what we did in the past, we did transport some up to here. We don't have the staff really to do that right now. We're still a little short in service, so it's going to be down at the Valley View location of the service department. Uh, it's for residents only. We have added a person down there that keeps an eye on that every day. When you come in, don't be shocked that someone's going to walk out and say, hey, I need to see your ID because what we are finding is we had people from out of town, we had contractors dropping off materials, taking mulch. That's for our folks that live in our community, that's why we do that. So we are now starting to put some restraints on that to make sure that the people that are getting it live in our community. So they're not there to give you a hard time, they're just to say, hey, welcome to as much mulch as you want, but we got to live here. So, thank you. Director Gelati.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, currently, road paving work is taking place on several roads around the city. Uh, as you may have noticed, um, of most note, I guess, would be Golden Link Boulevard and the top Target Shopping Center. Uh, that should be finished as early as tonight, uh, so that's a good thing. And Newport Drive, as you might recall, uh, has been restricted to one-way traffic. Uh, we expect that to last for about another week and a half, and then we'll reopen it to two-way traffic. End of report.
Thank you. Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you guys have already said, Summer Fest was a great event. I'm definitely grateful to the service department for all the work that they put in. I want to highlight the work they put in prior to Summer Fest. There's two weeks of prep work that goes into that. Uh, the community gets to see them out on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. There's two weeks prior to that, though, that they really hustle around for us, as well as the Parks and Rec Department. So kudos to them for all the work they did in leading up to that, um, to get us through that big weekend. I thought the parking crews did an amazing job. We're a little bit short-staffed and yet parked better than we had in years past. So I thought they did a great job of getting people in, keeping, keeping it too pretty clear, uh, thanks to fire and police. I thought their presence was fantastic at the event, especially police on Saturday when we hit our biggest crowds. So the world here knows, if you want to have a really crowded Summer Fest experience, go between, on Saturday, go between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, and I promise you, it's the busiest it is. If you want a lesser crowd, go any other time that Summer Fest is open. There's the tip of the day. Overall, great event. Um, we are preparing for Fall Fest, uh, coming up in September, on September 23rd, and then also Touch a Truck, uh, which will, uh, kick off in August. Some more information on that as we go. We submitted on May 25th our gold medal plaque award, uh, video, so that was, uh, completed already. You guys got to see that previous, that did officially get submitted, so we're excited about that. Still waiting on the results. Um, and then the multi-purpose fields, as Council President Brandt had alluded to earlier. We had a spirited conversation yesterday. I thought everything went well, and we were able to answer a lot of questions, and those fields should be done in the next week or so. And then a project coming up in August is to finish the tree wall. The tree wall, as we define it at the rec, is between the Mackrec parking lot and the parking lot for, uh, the baseball fields. That's the tree wall that goes down and provides the separation. The final cleanup, a brush and cutting off limbs on some of the trees and taking out some dead trees will happen in October, because if we touch that now, we will damage the existing trees. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to remind all residents that the deadline is getting close. July 17th is the deadline for filing for your refund for the Macedonia 0.25% of your taxes. And, uh, that is unless you have an extension with Rita, that we will extend our due date to that extended due date. And I want to thank council for approving the tax budget and the second appropriation amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. We are officially completed with flushing every hydrant within our district. Um, it was actually completed in June, has been turned into clean water. The guys did a phenomenal job. The hydrant painting crew are making phenomenal headway. We're getting calls, people liked the new hydrants, as they call them, they've just painted. Um, so that's been very successful. We have officially moved into new station three in Northfield Center, and Director of Township Services for Northfield Center, Tim Black, notified me today that there will be an open house on August 12th there from 11:00 to 3:00, so we will, we will be participating in that. At your next meeting, we should have our new squad here, which if it is here, we will pull it out front, that's the one that, you may remember you ordered back in 2021, uh, before winter, so. And I do have photographs of our new engine, it has been built up in Wisconsin, but it's not much to look at, so based on the photos I may receive, I also may have Kyle put those up. I'd also like to take some time tonight. Um, we had a sad, very sad event last Saturday here. Uh, Matt Pointkowski was lieutenant with the Merle's Fire Department. He actually started his fire service career here as an explorer in high school with my kids. Uh, Matt passed away from, uh, what do they call it? Occupational cancer. So it was a line-of-duty death. Uh, so he had full firefighter honors for his funeral. Um, many members of his department from South Carolina came up, we had some local departments participate. And it was a very sad day for a gentleman of 40 years old to pass away, he leaked to his career, so, um, it was a rough week, and it's been very difficult with some of the calls we've had. It's just been a strange couple of weeks. And, uh, so keep everybody in their prayers, there's some bad stuff happening out there. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for staying strong and keeping your guys strong to fight through those difficult things you guys deal with. Chief Yakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. Our, the police department has just completed our Ohio Collaborative Recertification. Every three years, we need to recertify. Um, Lieutenant Costello did a great job with that, he worked very hard to get that done quickly. Also, we have a new officer, Dan Ibersall, that will be starting with us on July 10th. We're very excited about that. And we had another drone team success story last Friday. Our officers, uh, were on a call, before they got there, the suspect had ran off into the woods. The officer searched, activated the drone team. Uh, Patrolman Skirbin, who was a pilot, uh, quickly located the suspect and was able to guide the officers in to make a, a quick arrest without incident, so that worked very well. Uh, of course, everybody enjoy your Fourth of July holiday, but please be safe, and with fireworks, use common sense. That's all I have.
Thank you, and thank you to Lieutenant Costello, because I know that that collaborative work is a lot, because I know you used to do it, so I, I appreciate that you did that, and I think you left something out.
Well, there was, uh, some new things in the collaborative, um, that we applied for. We don't have certification on those yet, but the assessor told me that this new thing, he believes, were the first one in the state that completed the requirements to submit. So it, it, it's a lot of work. I mean, I don't know if you guys, the mayor knows what I went through last time when we started this initially. And, you know, Lieutenant Costello hit the ground running, you know, and worked together on it, he did most of the work, I'm not taking credit. I know what it was like, that's why I appreciate what he got us through, so I do.
Thank you, appreciate it. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have conducted and concluded interviews for the additional administrative assistant for the fire department with the help of Chief Ripley, Assistant Chief Solinsky, and Sherry herself. And we have also conducted and concluded interviews for the three maintenance workers, um, with Dan Wilson, and now we will be doing background checks, drug screens, and closing those out and getting, um, our employees on board.
Thank you.
End of report.
Commissioner Roderick.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what are some of our projects that we have going ahead? First off, we have, uh, we issued, uh, 14 single-family building permits this month. Uh, 13 of those were issued before our search, so we're going to have an active, uh, probably an active six months with single-family buildings. Don Mash Julis, uh, has vacated their existing space, they're starting to move into their new space, they hope to be open by July 11th, as our anticipated date. And then Panda Express and the Wave Car Wash are creeping towards opening, they both as the track falls as they move forward. Uh, I anticipate that they will all be open sometime in July. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, 28 helped us take its major project, adding another layer of, uh, backup storage for, uh, ransomware, yeah. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Director Godetti. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I don't know if I should say this under new or unfinished, but I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Pointkowski family for such a tribute at our fire department and surrounding fire departments, as well as the members who flew up from Myrtle Beach and the county down there. Um, Matt's mom and dad, Renee and Bruce, his brother Eric, sister Mandy, and all the family and friends. It was a sad time to say goodbye, but it was so respectful and so appreciated by his family to see so many care. They are doing another memorial service in South Carolina. Um, and if you haven't seen it, Chief, there is a photo by Jason Rapids, Roberts, who is a photographer. I'll send you the link. There is, he created a photo album of the tribute that was done outside. But on behalf of the family, thank you.
You're welcome. Very sad we had to do it, but happy we could help.
Any other new business?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, and I hope you have a very fun and safe holiday. Just remember that not only, uh, to have fun, but also be a good neighbor. Uh, many of us have pets that are, uh, afraid of fireworks, and we're willing to deal with that for a short time, but please don't do fireworks all day. Also remember, some of your neighbors might be combat veterans or have other issues with PTSD, and they also do not appreciate the booms going off all day. So if you can, just enjoy a community fireworks show, or at least, uh, keep your, your noise to a minimum, and be a good neighbor. Thanks.
Anyone else?
It's my 42nd wedding anniversary on the 4th.
Well, happy anniversary, sir.
I'd be too.
All right. Don't have a motion.
Be too big time.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.